I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District. Today we have trustee members present, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Román Dinos Parsa, Mr. Eduardo Campirano, Mr. Oliveira is on his way, and Ms. Zimmerman is out of town, is on her way, and Ms. Bredele is out of town.
Yes.
We also have Dr. Judith Garcia, President. And so at this time, we have some announcements to make briefly before we convene into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two introductions to make, and so I'm going to call on Dr. Jose Martín to make the introductions.
Sorry, we have a little, a little number of...
Doctor Martín.
If it was me sitting back there, everybody would know that I was there for the ball. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Madam President, it is a pleasure to introduce our new Chief Information Officer, Dr. Xihao Steve Chen. We have been working for two or three years under the leadership of Ms. Rosmarie Martinez in the establishment of a strategic plan for information technologies. And part of the recommendations of that, of that plan was that we incorporate all of the functions of technology into, into one unit under one Chief Information Officer. So at long last, our very first, Dr. Chen grew up in China. In 1985, he came to the United States to study at the University of Illinois at Urbana, where he received his Master of Science and his PhD. He was the first place winner in the Monochrome category in the CBT Directions 1991 Screen Design Competition in Boston, and won the Thesis Project Grand Award from UTUC in 1991. The software he prepared titled "Linking Different Cultures by Computers" was used by the Indiana K-12 School System. This is not the first time that Dr. Chen has been described as a first CIO. He served as the first Vice President for Information Technology at the South Texas College of Law, and as the first Chief Information Technology Officer and Assistant Vice President at Utica College of Syracuse University. He will provide leadership in creating and maintaining a fully integrated and secure IT environment for higher learning, promoting harmony between administrative computing and academic activities. At City College, he led a team to consolidate all IT resources just to increase efficiencies and eliminate barriers for streamlined IT services to improve student services. He has been an advocate for global knowledge web development, and has successful experience in writing and managing grants. He led an effort in 2003 to obtain a NASA grant for the support of research on academic programs in homeland and software security, and had received grants from Microsoft, National Science Foundation, and other government agencies. He was recognized as a Senior Fulbright Specialist in the field of global knowledge web and information strategic planning. He was distinguished as honorary professor by the Beijing Electric Power College and by Xiamen University, both in China. In 2005, he helped South Texas College of Law to establish the first legal educational center in Shandong University in China. Here in the States, he formed the Great Lakes Academic Computer Consortium that facilitated the communications amongst universities and colleges in Chicago and Northern Indiana in 1993. In 2001, he initiated and organized the Greater Central New York State Academic Computer Consortium that involved more than 10 universities and school districts. In 1999, he founded an e-society club in New York City to help e-business dreamers communicate with each other and start their own business. Between 93 and 98, he served as a representative for Purdue University to the Indiana Higher Education Telecommunication System. In 1994, he worked with the Governor of Indiana to initiate, initiate and implement the Access Indiana statewide network project, and was elected Vice President for the Access Labor County Council, the first grand recipient from Indiana to implement international connections throughout a county. Committed to building strong communities, Dr. Chen from the Great Lakes Academic Computer Consortium, throughout his career, he has taken a proactive leadership role in forging strong relationships between government and key vendors. He was invited by five states governors to participate in the Midwest Summit in Information Technology, served as a reviewer for the U.S. Department of Education for the Star School Program and Community Learning Center grants, with support from the New York State Congress, city officials, and organizational leaders. He helped host the first Bridging the Digital Divide Conference in New York City in 2000. In 2000, Dr. Chen became a U.S. citizen. He plays piano and accordion for his American Chinese fellowships, and I hope the rest of us. He loves tennis, like he now has a partner, and, and, and swimming. I'm asking you to help me welcome Dr. Chen onboard.
Thank you, Provo-Studman Martin, for very kind introduction. It's my great honor to join the great leadership team of UTB and TSC. I do for work to working with all of you to make UTB and TSC as a better learning place for all the students, citizens, and state Texas and all over the country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
And now, with your permission, I would like to ask Dr. Carl Stockton, the Dean of the School of Education, to come up.
Thank you, Dr. Martín. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Garcia, it is my honor to introduce a new staff member in the School of Education, Dr. Steve Rosales. Dr. Rosales, would you please stand? As you know, serving the P-16 environment is very important to our mission, not only in the School of Education, but at the University of Texas, Brownsville, Texas Southmost College. And for about two years now, we were searching for the right person for the position. And I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Rosales has been with us for about two weeks, and, and has lived up to the expectations. Dr. Rosales's title is Assistant to the Dean for P-16 Initiatives on this campus. Prior to joining ETB-TSC, Dr. Rosales was the principal at Rosaca Middle School in Los Fresnos. Dr. Rosales grew up in Brownsville, was born and raised in Brownsville. He's a graduate of Hannah High School. Dr. Rosales then, after leaving the Valley, attended college at Texas A&amp;M University College Station, where he received his Bachelor's Degree in History with a minor in Mathematics. He also received his Master's Degree at Texas A&amp;M University College Station in Educational Administration. Finally, he received his Doctorate in Education in Curriculum Instruction from the University of Houston. He's been a teacher for over 15 years, an administrator for the last six years. And I will say to you that two nights, two weeks ago, I went to the Brownsville Independent School District New Teacher Dinner, and I expected to have to introduce him to everyone. Well, I'm here to tell you, I think he knew more people in that room than, than I did. And so I thought to myself, Dr. Rosales, why don't you introduce me to some of these folks? So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Steve Rosales to the board.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Madam President, it is my honor and privilege to now accept this position in this new adventure, in this new chapter in my career. I've spent the past 15 years in education, in the public field, and now I'm going to be spending it here at the university level. And it's my undying desire to make sure that we can make our students here in the Valley. And it's one of my things why I came back to the Valley, to become a teacher and an educator, so that we make them the best that they can be, and let them know that they are the best, and make this, make the Valley the best that it can be here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Martín.
Thank you, Dr. Martín. Now, the board's gonna convene in executive session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Thank you. Okay, the board's now gonna convene back in, in regular session. We move into item number two, consideration of possible action discussed concerning real estate matters. First one is I ask for a motion to approve a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Villa Phase Two, Unit 10F in Brownsville.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
For thirty-eight thousand.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. The next item is again a motion for a, to approve the contract and resolution on the purchase of Unit 3B in Fort Brown, and that is for...
Forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I know.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparsa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. The third item is the purchase of Unit 5004 in Fort Brown Villa Phase One.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano. Second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries. Then now we move into item three.
We have one more, Mr. Chairman. Contract resolution purchase of lots.
No, 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 no. That is not a action item.
The two lots on Alta Vista?
Where? Missing something.
It's right below that, the next one after the...
Yes, yes, yes. I apologize.
For fifty thousand, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Campirano. Second the motion. Second by Mr. Sparsa and Zimmerman. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
That's two lots for more parking on Jackson.
Outstanding. Okay, now, we now move into item number three, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of June 22nd. Look at that and ask if, oh, have a motion on that?
To members of the audience, you may wonder why the board is talking so fast. It's not only because it's very chilly in here, but we have a seven o'clock swearing in, and so we want to be expeditious about moving through the agenda. So excuses if we sound like we're...
We fell too much sugar this afternoon.
Ten cups of coffee.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Campirano.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Speakers to item number four, the agenda items for discussion. No speakers. Thank you. Item number five is a board briefing. No, we're not gonna move on to that one. Item number seven is Business Affairs Partnership Committee. Mr. Campirano.
Mr. Chairman, the Business Affairs Partnership Committee met and considered the following items. The first item on the agenda was a consideration, possible action for the bid on the physical plant road entrance. Due to the construction of the REK, the REC, the Recreation, Education, and Kinesiology Complex, the entrance to the physical plant will be relocated. This bid is for the construction of the new road entrance. Three bids were solicited, with the lowest bid being R&amp;R Paving Company in the amount of 242,576 dollars and forty-four cents. The committee discussed this. Staff's recommendation is to approve the low bid for R&amp;R paving. There is an experience with this paver. He's done good work for us in the past, and the committee recommends, and I would move, the approval of the low bid for the paving of the access road to the physical plant in the amount of 242,576 dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano to accept R&amp;R paving company.
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The second item for consideration by the committee was on the general liability educators' legal crime and auto insurance policy renewal. The policy renewal provided by our insurance agent, Shepherd Walton King, through the Texas Political Subdivisions and Public Educators Association of Texas for crime, general liability, automobile, and educators' legal policies is for a total of 55,442 dollars. This is one instance where the actual premium dropped from prior year. The premium for this renewal is 5,766 dollars less than last year's premium. And I know we have a representative from Shepherd Walton King. If anyone has any questions, the committee recommends, and I would move, to accept the renewal of the insurance coverages in the amount of 55,442 dollars.
Motion's been made by Mr. Campirano.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
The last item considered by the committee was amendments to the TSC budget for the fiscal year 2005. The two amendments were presented. Both of these are additional year-end expenses, and I guess as we close the books, just kind of getting everything in order. First amendment was Amendment 06011 to adjust additional year-end expenses, and Amendment 06012 to adjust for additional condominium revenues and additional golf course expenses. Both of those are delineated in your package. Again, these are for the fiscal year just expired. No, actually, at the end of this month, the fiscal year will end. The committee recommends, and I move, to accept the TSC District Fiscal Year 2006 Budget Amendments Number 0611 and Number 0612 as presented.
Motion's made by Mr. Campirano.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
That completes the committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Campirano. We now move to item number eight, which discusses the tax rate for the District 06, ad loan tax rate, and Dr. Moore is gonna start that discussion.
I want to thank the board members for attending the tax workshop that we held this last Monday, and for their participation in that workshop. Significant questions were asked, and, and I have included information in this presentation that you requested at that workshop. Some of what you'll see, for those of you attended, and will, will be the same as, as what we did. One of the things you asked for is what do we spend our money on? The taxes that we do collect, what do we spend it on? If you'll notice, the largest portion of the expenses related to taxes has to do with debt obligations, those are bonded indebtedness, 4.1 million dollars. The next highest is also a significant, an important number. If you recall, Texas Southmost College District provides scholarships for students attending a partnership, and the budgeted amount for this coming year is 3.3 million dollars. That's a substantial scholarship and assistance, tuition scholarship for students attending a partnership who live in the district. Repairs and renovations, another million six, property acquisition, about one million. Insurance, it went up again, if you recall, this year, about 366,000 dollars, 1,000,000, 1.05 million dollars. Institutional advancement at the partnership is partially funded by Texas Southmost College. This is the arm of the partnership that raises money. Funding for the library, provides library books for all students at the partnership. And then the 1.1 million is TSC operating expenses. That 13.67 million, 13 million 67,000 dollars is about 10,000 more than we intend to raise in taxes. But those are the areas where we use taxpayers' money to support the operations of the partnership and of the district, and provide scholarships for students. Definitions and terms, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because we went through it, and, and each of you have been through this process before, and, and, and for the Dino, who has not in this time, was at the workshop. So I'm going to just remind us that the 2,000 rate is the current year rate, effective rate raises about the same amount of dollars. Rollback rate provides, if you do not exceed it, you are not subject to a petition to have an election. And the debt rate is that amount that's required to service our debt for the coming budget year. Current tax rate for the year 2005 is 16.272 cents per 100 dollar valuation. The effective rate calculated for the coming 2006 year is maintenance and operation of about 9.5 cents, and a debt service rate of 5.1 cents. And you can see broken down there where that 5.1134 cents comes from for the debt on 1987, 205, 206, and the maintenance notes. And that is a portion down. The rollback rate, what happened to my screen, Johnny? It's not showing up. The...
Can't see the rollback rate on the screen.
Let me just read it to you. 1.57093 is the number for the rollback rate. I don't know why you can't see it on the screen.
There you go.
You can see it better there now. The rollback rate is 1.57093 cents, and I need, handout there, their handouts, I have handouts. I'm sorry, it was working a minute ago.
It doesn't like to be rushed, Wayne.
I'm sorry, I'm following your instructions. Okay, if you'll look, the title of the slide that you're looking at is about probably two or three pages into your handout. It's called Revenue Generated. And you'll see, starting on the right-hand side, year 2005, and the next column is Effective Rate, 2006. The next column is the Rollback Rate for 2006, and it is a combination of Maintenance and Operations of 10.59 cents, and a debt rate of about 5.1134 cents. Not about, it's exactly that. And a total rate of about 15.7093 cents per 100 dollars. We are proposing the full funding rate, which provides, the law asks that you fund the amount of money needed in your budget, and we are proposing a tax rate of 10.995 cents for the maintenance and operations, and a debt rate of 5.1134 cents for debt service, for a total of 16.10989 cents per 100 dollar valuation to fund the budget as passed by the board for the coming 2006 year. The total dollars raised by those amounts are 8.9 million for the maintenance and operations, and 4.144 million for debt service, for a total of 13,577,000 dollars in round numbers. That funds within 72 dollars the amount we've budgeted as needed from taxes for the district. The taxes that we assess are very low. Our tax rate, if we propose a tax rate of about 16 cents per 100 dollar valuation, what we are proposing is lower than the 16.7 we had in the year 2005. Total taxes paid by a person who has a house of 100,000 dollars with the proposed rate would be 161 dollars and nine cents a year. If that same house, 100,000 dollars in 2005 paid 162 dollars and 77 cents, so your taxes would be 1 dollar and 68 cents less this year than last year if your house was not revalued.
That's just to put the caveat right there. Was it, if it didn't go up in value?
I only know of the person whose actual property values went down.
Who's that?
Wayne, that's 16.2, not 16.7. The current rate is 16.2.
Yes, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Thank you. Budget implications. I'm not gonna fool with that. The, if we pass the effective rate, we would be short 1.2 million dollars in our budget. If we passed the rollback rate, our budget would be short approximately 324,000 dollars. If the board chose to pass the full funding rate, we would meet our budget expectations. The action that's needed this evening is to take a record vote on the rate that you intend to adopt, and then schedule, if it exceeds the effective rate, schedule two meetings for public hearings. We have checked with Board of Trustees, and we have commitments from four board members that August 28th and 31st would be good dates for the board to hold those hearings. Also, the President and staff are also available on those dates, and they would be, we're suggesting they be held at 5:30 in the evening in this location. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. There are proposed motions in your packet for this rate, or, and we can change those motions if you choose to do it rates different than what...
Mark, can you try and see that tax examples slide, the one that precedes the one you've got right now? We'll, we'll show on there. Somebody assist so that that can happen. That's, that's probably, it's a very good slide to show what the impact...
Mary will base it for.
And...
There you go. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Just need somebody knows what they're doing. Let's leave it, let's leave it. No, delete it. It's fine. It's fine.
Thank you.
Oh, no. No.
That's why I wanted to make sense.
No, leave it. Where, no, leave it. It's fine. The effective rate for a house of 75,000 dollars, the, now you can see it all. On a house valued at 75,000 dollars, if your house was 75,000 last year and this year, your total tax in 2005 was 122 dollars and eight cents. Proposed for this next year would be 120 dollars and 82 cents, a decrease of 1 dollar and 26 cents per year. Same thing, you can see on the house valued at 100,000. Just to give you a comparison, the taxes for school districts around, instead of 16 cents, are approximately 1 dollar and 30 cents, 1 dollar and 50 cents for Brownsville and for Port Isabel, 1 dollar 38 for Port Isabel. There are two motions in your packet that may be considered for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I did have an opportunity to come by the workshop that we had, and carefully looked at all our options, and I think that, that after looking at all the options, I would like to move that the board proposed that a maintenance and operations tax rate of 0.109955, and a debt tax rate of 0.051134 per 100 dollar valuation be placed on the agenda for adoption at the September 14, 2006 Board of Trustees Meeting.
What's the, I'm sorry, what, what would that make the total rate?
You wanna see the slide again?
The total rate would be 0.161089 cents per 100 dollar valuation.
Okay. So, you have questions or comments?
On the slide, Mr. Campirano. Motion's been made by Dr. Robles to, to the, propose the, the effective tax rate as, as discussed. Is there any more discussion on this item? Dino, Darlene?
Who's second?
Nobody's seconded yet.
I'll just point out that that's, that would represent the proposed full funding for 2006, and I'll, I'll second Dr. Robles's motion.
It's been seconded by Mr. Sparsa. Any further discussion on this item, ma'am?
Well, the only comment I would make is that, you know, granted, when you put it up on the thing, it, it's insignificant, but, you know, I do think if you've been reading the paper and all the discussion about the uproar over the increased appraised values of property, you know, and in fact, while this... of property, you know, and in fact, while this may show that you have a house in two thousand and five that is going to see no change in their tax rate, it may very well go up because the appraised value of that property went up. So, you know, I, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't give some consideration perhaps to the, uh, uh, rollback rate. That would be consistent with what we've been doing in past years, and certainly, I, I know we've done that, uh, in the past, uh, four, five years. Uh, I'm, I'm not proposing that you do the effective tax rate. I think the effective tax rate, I guess we all know, is just simply designed to generate the same amount of revenue at prior year. Uh, but, uh, and, and I think too is that, granted, if you look at it individually, uh, our rate is very favorable to the other taxing entities, but when you looked at a combined tax bill, you know, it, it all adds up. Um, I, I'm just saying that, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I'm prepared to vote for the sixteen point one zero or, or what would effectively be the current rate.
My concern would be the, the deficiency in the, uh, in the, in the budget. You're talking almost, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we'd have to, um, cut elsewhere.
Three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Exactly. So...
Uh, I think that the, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that the, the change is minimal, and uh, although we are looking at this, uh, right now, the, um, staff is looking at ways of how to continue to cut costs here and there, but when you, sometimes they're down to the bone, I'm not sure what else is left other than the bone marrow. So, uh, it's really, we're really, you know, we charge our staff to go back and look and, and, uh, do what they can, and I, I trust, you know, that they are doing the very best they can, and, uh, I don't, you know, I think that we, we might be just splitting hairs here for just a minimal change.
Uh, staff has shown us where they could cut back if they had to. We've got a, it's in your package, under the budget implications. If you had to reduce three hundred and twenty-four thousand, there's a couple of line items here where that would come from.
Wayne, this, this tax rate, how would it, uh, affect a senior citizen or a person who has a disability exemption under the guidelines that we adopted in the past?
As you recall, the, uh, the tax rates for, uh, for seniors and disabled, uh, were frozen by this board, um, I think is, last year was the first year that occurred, so they would remain, that remains in effect.
No, no, they would not. They're, they're, they're essentially...
Their taxes are frozen. Their rate is frozen, right there.
I, I had had, uh, the, the thought that Mr. Campidano had while at the workshop, but, uh, in, in going through the process, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is, is significant on, on our budget, and, and the, the amount to the individual taxpayer was, was not a whole lot. And any reduction to the taxpayer is helpful, but, but it really wasn't a whole lot. And, and when you look at what, what goes to the tax fund, it's the second, second slide on your presentation, thirty-three, or about thirty percent of our tax funded, or our, our total funded budget by taxes is going to scholarships, and, and that three hundred thousand dollars is ten percent of what we'd be giving to our scholarship fund. And that was the way I justified it, uh, to, uh, to, uh, go ahead and, and, uh, move forward with the, uh, total funding, uh, just, just so that, I mean, it was, it was right on as far as our expectations, uh, with regard to our budget. Uh, I know every little bit counts, but, but, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars on our budget was, was something that, that I took into consideration.
One of my concerns that I have, uh, as far as, uh, uh, any unforeseen contingencies that may be affected by, uh, a reduction of the property tax rate is the insurance requirement. Now, this past year, our insurance shot up, I believe, was it two hundred percent, Dr. Moore?
It was, uh, it went from about six hundred and fifty thousand to, it went up by three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
And so, I anticipate that the cost of insurance, which is a major portion of the, uh, of the usage of this tax-based money, is not going to be coming down much in the same light that the, uh, uh, coverage that we discussed tonight in Boron. I anticipate that the cost of insurance, because Katrina is going to continue to skyrocket, and, and I don't think that, that, that's something that, uh, would not be affected by a reduction of three hundred thousand dollars. I think it would be affected in, in, in a negative way on, uh, on our services that we provide here on this campus.
Again, nothing that we received suggests cutting scholarships, or nothing that we received suggests, you know, cutting what we're spending on insurance premium. Uh, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I throw it out for discussion, and, and, I mean, that's, that's why we have these discussions.
The other, the other part that I'd remind the board of is that the other increases last year in operations were utilities, and both of those are, are, are increases that we, while we try to control our use of utilities and we try to control our, our expenditure in insurance, you were part of those discussions, and you saw that there are some things that are, that are simply not going to go down regardless of, of how we try to trim. So, so while we chose, Mr. Campidano, to, to, to provide you a scenario that if we were to cut, those cuts would come out not of scholarships and not of, of, of other items, but in terms of land acquisition or operations, those are still very, very difficult choices. Uh, just so you know, the budget we present to you in deferred maintenance, um, is a very thin budget. As we build new buildings, every building that we, that we leave needs renovation. Every building that we, that we haven't touched in twenty years needs some sort of renovation, and all of that comes out of operational dollars. Um, and so, so just so you know, of course, you can always trim a budget. There's just no question that you can find some way not to delay something one more year. But, but in support of what Dr. Robles was, was pointing out earlier, uh, we run a great risk when we defer much-needed maintenance, uh, for, uh, for another year, uh, not to, not to mention the, the, um, the, uh, the service that we provide students. Uh, one building in particular that I will alert you to now that is not on this budget for major renovation that we wanted to put on was Tandy Building. Those of us, those of you who are, it served in, in Tandy Building who, who work there, uh, that is the first stop shop for our students. It is where everybody comes in first, and, um, and people are, are literally, um, working side by side too closely for, for comfort and without provisions for students. Uh, that's going to be a major effort on the part of, 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 uh, of the staff over the next few years. So just be, just be confident that, that, uh, we have tried very, very hard to, um, provide for you a very conservative estimate of what, what we could spend for renovation and operations this year. It, it obviously is your decision either way. We felt that the, the full-funded budget would be one that was, that was, uh, would, would be used wisely and still not meet the operational needs, uh, of the university.
Well, I think it's good that the public knows how we spend our money. Uh, no more discussion on my part, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Campidano. A motion has been made by Dr. Robles.
Second the motion.
And seconded by Mr. Espasa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No one? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other motion, and that's to, uh, set the, uh, dates for the two hearings that are required. That motion is also in the packet.
Okay. May I have a motion to propose, uh, the, that the Adlorm, the proposed Adlorm tax rate for the year two thousand and six be held on August twenty-eighth and August thirty-one of this year at five-thirty in this Corvus Boardroom. Motion's made by Ms. Zimmerman. Seconded by Dr. Robles. All in favor? All opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, when we do this, we're not popular. You know, I, and Mr. Ross, I've been out following, we take a hit, we take a PR hit. Every time September rolls around, we have to do something for taxes, and, and it's never an easy thing to do. And he brings up some very good points. Dr. Garcia brings up some very good points, and we, I feel like we have a month or two more time.
We do, but we really don't. But not when it comes to the students. You know, and I guess when, as a taxpayer myself, you see the tax statement comes in, and you see the bottom line, and, and some people don't, what is this? Why, you know, they just kind of drag it down. What is this? You know, Southwest Union College, what, in our case, we've been in, in Water District, what are all these things? And, you know, the bottom line is, and if I have to bring it compared to last year, and so, we take a hit, and this is not, this is not the fun part of being on the boards, man. We put a lot of thought in it.
I, I concur, and I think that Mr. Campidano brings up some good points, and the public needs to know that we don't, we, uh, don't take it lightly. We study this very carefully, but with the, like you said before, the cost of fuel and cost of insurance going way up, um, I, I think that the, the three hundred and twenty, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand is a pretty good, I mean, to keep the, the, uh, the maintenance and operations and other things down to that level, I think we're doing pretty good.
And we did not work on this decision like the others. We have thought about this.
Thank you, uh, board members. We, uh, now move to item number nine, which is the first reading of policy for C1 with regards to sick leave. Uh, I ask that you look at that policy if an action is necessary at this time. So the, this has got ten minutes. So, uh, bond project report?
Let me, wait, is this, is not an action item? I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
No, it's just, it's just a first reading.
That's fine. And it tells you that I haven't read my agenda, so I confess. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I am pleased to report on the progress of the bond projects. We are working with the architects to continue with the development of schematic designs. During the month of September, we will meet with the campus advisory committees and the board bond advisory committees, uh, to, as the schematic plans are finalized. We have a video of the projects that are currently under construction. We begin with the ITech thermal plant. A new reinforced lab was for to make room for one of the new chillers. This new chiller, uh, will replace the existing two chillers that are coming up on the screen right now, uh, and the chiller is scheduled to be operational at the end of October. Final completion for this project, which includes two new chillers and two cooling towers, is planned for February of two thousand and seven. That is the chiller, the new chiller for the thermal plant. The demolition phase of the Recreation, Education, and Kinesiology Center is near completion. The former USDA buildings have been demolished, and we are finalizing debris cleanup. The Don Ray Partnership is preparing the site for the new building pad that will come next. The, uh, I would like to report that two out of the three subcontractors that were used for this project, for this phase of the project, are from the Valley. As a reminder, the groundbreaking for this facility is scheduled next Tuesday, August twenty-second, at ten o'clock in the morning. That concludes my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Item eleven, uh, Dr. Moore, you've got seven minutes.
Well, it's Johnny will hurry. We have a, we have several, uh, projects ongoing, uh, in construction, uh, that will be on the screen in just a minute. We've thrown him a curve today with two different reports. The first area is renovation of ITNet, uh, where, uh, part of, uh, Dr. Chairman's folks are working, and, uh, they, I walked over there today. I had not seen this area, and, uh, they, and Dr. Khan and his...
What building is this, Dr. Moore?
Pardon me?
Building.
This is in the Rustlerburg building where air conditioning and refrigeration technology used to be, and, uh, Dr. Khan and his staff have, have a nice facility now, uh, with, uh, meeting rooms, offices, a control room, a monitoring room for all of the, uh, computer activity on campus. We also have planted some trees along University Boulevard. This is not all the trees that we're going to put there, but a few at the bridge just outside this, you walk away today. Uh, they're turned a little brown. I was a little disturbed. I called Abraham the other day. The, the trees are brown. He said, he said, well, they're, they're going through shock, they're losing their leaves, but it's going to be lovely. I, it scared me to death.
That's kind of what they were for.
The compress area, those were bald cypress. No, I didn't choose them.
So we were, we were in a compliment chat.
Uh, this is the compress area, moving right along. Compress area, uh, this is the boiler area, uh, inside the, the concrete structure there. It was designed to have a roof that would blow off and blow up, uh, if the compress blew up. Uh, we're obviously not starting the boilers, but we're stabilizing this, uh, so that we can hopefully acquire some funding from, uh, external sources to redo this facility and make it a historic site. Uh, the print shop is relocating within Rustlerburg, out of the main sort of classroom area into the old diesel shop technology area, and you can see it is under construction, not finished in the way that, that ITNet was, but, uh, that we hope to have this finished in, within the next couple of months, uh, and then we will free up space in Rustlerburg and move some of the, you, print shops have some odors and things about them, and this separates them. This is, uh, the greenhouse relocation was a result of the new construction at the rec. Uh, remember, we had some old greenhouses from the USDA leftover. Uh, those have been demolished. Uh, we, this is the first part of the construction of the new greenhouse area. We took advantage of a, uh, a concrete slab there. The folks using the greenhouse are our own physical plant for plants on campus and the Bahia, Bahia Grand project, which, uh, is underway. So about half of it's Bahia Grand and half of it's for physical plant, and it's, it's really a pretty facility. Uh, if you drive around back on the levee, uh, you can, you can get a good shot of it. Where, it's a green facility, no, I mean, it's a greenhouse, I know, but we are using rainwater, uh, to water the plants, collecting it off the roof. Uh, electricity will soon be there, and we will also have some, some water from Rissaka. Uh, that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, there are five minutes left.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Dr. Garcia?
Oh, well then, I have three minutes. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were not going to have mine, but I, I do want to report on, on a couple of things. Um, we, uh, we held a dinner last night on campus. It was just marvelous, and, uh, it was for our first, uh, class of, um, of Scorpion Scholars at Full Scholarship. Let me tell you about the scholarship. Um, this year, we set aside a, a great deal of, of dollars for, to scholarship the top ten percent of the students in, uh, in, in our community, and that means Brownsville all the way to Harlingen, all the way to Port Isabel and in between. And last night, we welcomed a hundred and two of those top ten percent students and their parents to a wonderful, uh, dinner at, uh, at, uh, the, uh, Gran Salon. The students are from Brownsville, Los Fresnos, Port Isabel, Harlingen, Rio Ondo, and San Benito. Uh, to qualify, as I said, they had to be top ten percent, they had to be very competitive in other ways. What these students will receive is a total of a thirty thousand dollar scholarship. Uh, for every year that they are here, if they keep their grades up, they maintain their scholarship. The scholarship is sufficient to pay for tuition, fees, books, and on-campus housing if they would like. Forty-two percent of that total, the total number of students is a hundred and two, forty-two percent of them are top five students, and we have several Valley Victorians, uh, in the bunch. They're, they're wonderful, they're just the ideal students. We had a, kind of a mini pep rally. The parents are all excited about their kids being here. Many of them have already moved into the dorms. Many of them are dorm students as well. We're very, very pleased. We believe this program will grow every year to begin to attract those same students that everybody else wants to attract, uh, and we need as well for some of the new programs that, that we have online. So I wanted to make sure that I had time. That concludes my presidency.
Just one quick question. Because you mentioned the school districts that are participating. Is that any connection to how we started with the GIRA program? Any, because a lot of those same school districts are a part of that.
All of the, that's a very good point. Every one of these school districts is in, was part of the GIRA, and, and what's not here is that we're also giving... is that we're also giving to private school kids who graduated meeting the same criteria. So, we do have some of those, including some homeschooled, if they were able to justify with other grades, ACT, SAT scores. So, it's really, it's an open scholarship. We hope to be able to expand it beyond Cameron County in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. We still have 30 seconds left, and I'd like to just recognize Mrs. Meroz Cardenas is with us tonight, and all the... I don't have to tell you, all the projects that you see that are preparing to go full blast right now are all because of her leadership, and I would want to just recognize that she's here tonight. So, okay, 7 o'clock, and as you know, we were rushing, and I apologize for the rushing of this meeting, but we have some important business to also attend to, and that is the administering of the oath of office to one of our elected board members. At our May meeting, we declared the results of the May 13 trustee election. The members elected were Dr. Roman Dino Espasa for place one, Dr. Roberto Robles for place six, and Mr. David Oliveira for place seven. Mr. Espasa and Mr. Oliveira were sworn in at the June 22nd board meeting, and tonight we have the honor and distinction of having the Honorable Federal Judge Hilda G. Tagle to perform the oath of office, serving for Dr. Robles. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Judge Tagle to please come forward to administer the oath of office to Dr. Robles.
I'm going to take the advantage of being at the podium to first thank Dr. Robles for the honor of administering this oath. This has a very special meaning for me for many reasons. I am a product of a junior college education. Delmar College in Corpus Christi was the foundation for the rest of the education that I received, and I never really thought about what it took for the Delmar Board of Regents to have the kind of educational institution that gave me that wonderful foundation, but I see that now working in this board, on this board today, and it's really an honor for, again, many reasons, one of which is that I understand that Dr. Robles is also a product of junior college education. And I saw his civic commitment at its highest and its best when he was out politicking for the bond election, giving examples to voters who might not otherwise be inclined to vote for the bonds by giving very real, very vivid examples of the kind of education and the kind of resources that an education given by this institution contributed to the community. And you don't see that too often. I think that kind of commitment, like I said, people could really see the sincerity of what you were saying, and I'm sure that that helped carry the day. And so, Dr. Robles, it's an honor to do this tonight, and so I would ask you to please come up here and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Roberto Robles...
I, Roberto Robles.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of trustee of Texas Southmost College.
The duties of trustee of Texas Southmost College.
District, place six...
District, place six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd like to say that the last time I was sworn in, it was sworn in also by a federal judge, Judge Vella, and I was really honored at that time, and I'm truly honored by your swearing me in, and I just have to say that it took me many years to become a physician, and I have to tell you that sincerely, that the foundation of my education started when I was a migrant farm worker, standing in the middle of a tomato field at age 14 in Indiana with my wet from the waist down because of the morning dew had set on the plants, and to come this far is really, has been an incredible journey for me. Years later, I set foot on this campus with only one thing, and that was a "si se puede" attitude. And over the years, after I left Texas Almost College, this place has transformed into a world-class campus, and the reason behind that is because the people, this community, have a "si se puede" attitude. Starting with the president and the board of trustees here that I work with and the administration have also a "si se puede" attitude. So, I'm really, I feel very privileged to serve my community and to do the very best I can in order to further the educational opportunities for the people in our community. I'm really happy that my family's here, my wife, Perla, who supports me through all the things that I do in the community, my daughter, Clarissa, my son, Bobby, and our son, Carlos, who's not with us, but is in Laredo tonight, but I'm honored to be here with all of you, and thank you very much for this kind words.
Judge, you want to join us for another follow-up? Judge Tagle, will you join us?
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
We adjourn.